Hi, I'm Robin Schulz for the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
All right, we'll start May, I mean Monday, June 23rd. The Regent Council meeting to order. We do not have a work session, so it may be a tad bit lengthier for everything of each agenda item. We'll call a roll call vote first?
Council President Leita, Council Pro tempore, Presiding Council Member Murphy.
Present.
Council Member Sweeney. Council Member Driver.
Here.
Council Member Middlebrooks.
Here.
Council Member McClain.
Here.
All right, we'll ask Wendy to lead an invocation and also the place to be led by Councilman on the drive.
Dear Heavenly Father, just thank you for your loving grace. May your example shine for others to see in us. By you being with our warriors, our country, and our armed forces, and your protection surrounds us, we give thanks and glorify you in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, fully pledged.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, I'm going to go ahead and make the changes to the agenda then. I was asking here, but we'll make, you guys have a couple of changes to make to the agenda. Resolution 848825, correct me on this, Councilman Plankton, that will be continued to the July 14th meeting?
Correct.
Okay, any council folks have changed to the agenda? Other than that, all right, I wanted to actually do a little bit different since we have modified. Let's call, let's do a roll call vote to adopt the new agenda with those, that change made.
Motion to approve the new agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
Councilor Driver.
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks.
Aye.
Councilor McClain.
Aye.
Councilor Murphy.
Aye. Last thing I'll say, may I add five minutes to this, just as FYI, if council members don't vote on something or silence, that's considered a yes or aye. If you made a motion to nay in that, it cannot be changed after the fact of the meeting. So make sure that our city clerk, the knowledge of whether one aye or nay, will do a roll call vote on all the items on our agenda to make sure everyone is clear on who voted for what. That being said, Mayor, proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite Ms. Anna Claire Huddleston, Ms. Malika Kate Perry, and Ms. Victoria Powell, will they all come up? And we have a resolution this evening recognizing these young ladies, proclamation of a resolution for the proclamation. So, any ask? So, let's see, please read those proclamations.
This is a proclamation to honor and congratulate Malika Kate Perry, Victoria Powell, and Anna Claire Huddleston, residents of Hoover, on being crowned 2025 Miss Yellow Hammer Team Volunteers. Whereas it is fitting that the members of this city pay tribute to those citizens who bring service and purpose to their endeavors. And whereas the Miss Alabama Volunteer Organization's principles are represented as five points of the crown. Together, the first letter of each of those five principles spells SERVE and stand for service, education, responsibility, volunteerism, and empowerment. And whereas, a young lady of purpose and commitment, Malika Kate embodies the Miss Alabama Volunteer Organization's mission of service by volunteering with the student government at Douglas Middle School, creating the Care Project to generate awareness and provide resources and education for people with celiac disease in his first serving mission. And whereas Malika Kate will proudly represent the state of Alabama at the Miss Alabama Volunteer State Pageant in Oxford, Alabama, in July 2025. Whereas, a young lady with a community-oriented heart, Victoria embodies the Miss Alabama Volunteer Organization's mission of services by volunteering with the Care Project to generate awareness and provide resources and education for people with celiac disease, and has acted in her school and church. Whereas Victoria will represent the state of Alabama as the Miss Alabama Volunteer State Pageant in Oxford, Alabama, in June 2025. And whereas Anna Claire Huddleston is another young lady with a community-oriented heart and embodies the Miss Alabama Volunteer Organization's mission of service by volunteering with the Care Project to generate awareness and provide resources and education for people with celiac disease, and participates in community activities that empower young girls such as youth cheerleading or her school show choir. Whereas Anna Claire will proudly represent the state of Alabama at the Miss Alabama Volunteer State Pageant in Oxford, Alabama, in July 2025. Now therefore, we grant to Kate O'Meer and John B. Leina, the City Council President, on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, to hereby present this proclamation to Ms. Malika Kate Perry, Victoria Powell, and Anna Claire Huddleston upon serving as 2025 Miss Yellow Hammer Team Volunteers, and commend them for their dedication to the people of the state of Alabama, and wish them every success and all their future endeavors.
So my name is Malika Kate Perry, the Miss Yellow Hammer Team 2025, and I'm going to keep it short, and all I want to say is thank you, me and my predecessors were very honored for this award.
All right, Mayor, so no gas, regulations, or employer restrictions, I'm assuming, so none? So that's enough. But we do have a report from the preliminary financial statement, six month end, FY 2025. Our CFO.
Thank you. Just have two reports tonight, the first of which is a preliminary report for the current year, for the first six months. I'll wait to get that one pulled out. And council, these are the large pages that I provided to you that are easier to read than these small slides. Okay, so for the first six months, revenue, I want to kind of talk about those. I have been reporting every month on revenues. Now, this report is just actual revenues through the first six periods, so that would be from October 1st to March 31st. And as you'll notice, we've got $86 million, roughly over $86 million in revenue that's been collected in those six months. That represents almost 61% of the total budget of revenues for the year, the tax revenues for the year. And if you go down to the very bottom of the revenue statement that shows the grand total of all the revenues that have been collected through the first six months, $104 million, that number represents a little over 61%. So our revenues are trending to be, this would be 50% through the year, so it's good to see that our revenues are trending more than 50% at this point. So also on this statement, I want to point out that we've got our different buckets or funds that we like to report on. So the first column is the general fund, which is where most of our operating expenses come out of. The next grouping is for our special revenues. Those are the revenues that come in that are earmarked for particular purposes, we call them restricted funds. And so what you see is that all the revenues for the special revenues are budgeted under intergovernmental because that's where they come from. We don't have other tax revenues necessarily that come into the special revenues, but they're rather intergovernmental support. As we look at the actuals for our special revenues, we have $4.2 million, which is 48% of what's budgeted for those funds. Not all of the special revenues come in in an even and steady stream throughout the year, so some are, some come in in lump sums, so that's not particularly alarming. With our capital projects, we have some contributions, and then of course, with our bond funds, that's the borrowing that we had in 2023. The only item of revenue relates to the accrued interest on the investments that we're holding until those expenditures are made. On the next page, just to put into proportion, what is the relative proportion of the tax revenues, right? So the tax revenues were $86 million, and for the first six months, our sales and use taxes accounted for 67% of our total tax revenue. Again, these percentages can be a little bit misleading because unlike our property tax that we have, property tax comes, comes in and over, mostly over a few months, right? Where our sales tax revenues come in every month. So I'm still expecting our tax revenues, our sales and use taxes to approximate 75% to 80% of our total taxes like they were last year. But this gives a nice proportion to see the proportion of those tax revenues. Now, on the next slide, when we look at our total revenues, the total revenues, just our tax revenue, accounts for 82% of the revenues that we have posted so far. So again, this is, this is 82% of the $104.7 million in, in revenues that have already been accounted for for the first six months. On the next slide, we have our revenues, our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And this is one that I'm really excited to be able to report on. It is something that we always want to make sure we have all of our numbers in, that we've recorded all of our transactions, that our reconciliations are up to date, so that we can be providing reliable numbers to you for decision-making. So again, this is a pretty, pretty important and weighty report. Again, you see the revenue, so there's $104.7 million of revenue that we've already talked about. Under expenditures, expenditures for the first six months totaled $77.8 million. That is right now 47, roughly 47% of what's been budgeted in expenditures for the year. We have transfers in and transfers out that have happened between these funds that are on this page. And then also, at the very bottom, under special items, the revenue rebates. You see our actual revenue rebates paid to date are only $285,000, but most of our revenue rebates are paid on an annual basis, and a lot of them happen at the end of September for the whole year, right? So that will definitely affect a change. So as we're looking at the, at the excess of $26 million, that looks like a really big number, kind of the middle of the page, the excess of revenues and our expenditures. I do expect, and this is just because of the lumpy way in which our revenues come in, that we don't have the same amount of revenues that collect, get collected every month during the year. So our revenues are 61% of the budget, right? And then our expenses are 47% of the budget. We're going to see more expenditures, obviously, for the next six months, and so I do expect that excess to get a little away quite a bit, so don't get too excited and want to spend all that money. But at this point in time, a net change in fund balance, positive change in fund balance of $24 million would put our ending fund balance, would bring it from 80, roughly 80 million to 104 million in the general fund. Talking about special revenues, again, we've got these four buckets that go across the, across the page, and these are distinctly different funds. Those special revenues, remember, are the restricted funds that come in for particular purposes. So you can see that we brought in $4.2 million and have spent 5.9, almost 5.9 million dollars. And again, that has to do with residual amounts left over from the prior year in those special revenues that can be spent, as well as just a, a not so even stream of special revenue, revenues coming in every month. So if you look down to the bottom, we still see that we have a net change in fund balance for the special revenues that is $765,000. And so our projected fund balance for special revenues at this point in the year would be around $18 million. Capital projects, the next grouping there is where we set aside funds for important projects throughout the city. So we remember that there are, we make transfers from the general fund to cover these projects. So we don't normally expect to see a lot of revenue in the capital projects fund for that reason, right? Because we're funding those projects usually with excess from the general fund. So our capital projects is spending down those committed dollars, roughly $7.4 million, bringing our beginning fund balance in special projects from $55 million down to $48. And that is the normal way things should happen, for setting aside money ahead of time, and then we're spending it according to the, the purposes and intentions that the council had identified. Last but not least, our, our 2023 bond issue. This is actually, it's a capital improvement fund, but we labeled it the general obligation warrant 2023, so we would remember these are, these are bond funds that we're talking about. Remember, our revenue was related to the investment gains that we've had while we're waiting to spend that money. And then you can see the expenditures that we have had to date related to those bond funds. And our, our, our fund balance at the end of the year is, is pretty stable there. Okay, and I think that's the questions about the current year progress report. Will we move on to the revenues?
I have a question.
Yes.
Under the capital, is this all, can you hear me? Under capital projects, maybe since this is ending in March, I don't remember when it passes, but we had discussed having a specified performing arts center.
Yes.
Destination.
Yes, and I believe that happened after March, right? So we just tried to be real restrictive there and only include, and I can't remember the date.
Do you know what they themselves are?
I can't remember what that was, but we will definitely make sure that it is in there. Okay, and you can see, right, the performing arts money that was originally budgeted in the 2023 bond issue, it's still showing up in March, so that's going to move over, right, to the capital projects fund?
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Into the SSUT tax, is that higher or lower, about the same old as this time last year?
Okay, so that's in my next report. Seriously, I'm a hundred, but we can talk, I don't have that for the first six months, but I do have it more up to date for the first eight months.
Okay, before we start that, where is the, I guess lodging tax, bed fee, in this spreadsheet?
So the lodging tax would be in the other municipal taxes grouped into this, but I do have it broken down on the revenue report that I'm going to give you. I have that. Now, I don't have it broken out by bed fee for the current year, but we can get that for you.
Aye, thank you.
Okay. So on the next report, are there any more questions? Let's talk about our revenue trends. This, this report is intended to kind of just go over the major revenue sources of the city, and this is through the month of May, right? So on the very first page, you'll see this busy schedule that kind of shows for the last three years, the different buckets of revenues, the top 10, I believe it's top 10 revenues that we have here. For the, for the month of May, that puts us eight out of 12 months for the period, so it's roughly a little under 67% of, of the year that has happened. As we're looking at these major revenues, and just drawing their attention down to the bottom where the 2025 numbers show, are shown, we have, as a, as a percentage of budget, right, we'd be looking for those categories that are trending below the eight out of 12 months or the 67%. So we have two, two categories, one that's really almost there, and that is the rental tax. I expect next month, after we have the red May receipts in for SEC, we might see a little bit of a correction there. But the lodging tax that you just mentioned, Councilor Middlebrooks, or McClain, that is kind of trending, and this happened last, last month too, right? It was not trending to be quite what you would expect. So for 2025, we have $2,023 in lodging taxes. As we look at the comparison to the prior year, just for lodging, we're down 0.39%. So I would call that stable, but I would like to see it better, better than that. The rest of our categories, though, seem to be in line. And I know Councilor Middlebrooks had asked before about the grocery tax and where that lines up on the sheet, so we don't parse that out of sales and use, but I can tell you that year-to-date, the grocery tax is, that's been collected is 10, 10 point, almost $10.4 million of the total 71 we've collected. And so I thought that might be helpful in, in looking at just those major revenues. Now, when we look at the next slide and start to look at these month-on-month comparisons, a lot of our categories, we're seeing a healthy this May, better-than-last May kind of trend. So when we look at sales and use, just, just sale, the sales and use excluding SSUT, compared to last May, we're up 10.8%. When we look on the next slide, SSUT, month-over-month comparison, went up from last May of 632,000 to this May of 728. That's a 15.2% increase over May of last year. The next few slides, we have featured some of our taxes that do not come in in a smooth manner. So a lot of times, the month-to-month comparisons, we know that real property gets, a lot of those collections come in, December, January, February, and then the rest of them kind of trickle in. Same would be true with our licenses and permits, which are next, January, February. We're still seeing some good.
Go back to the previous slide, who pulls the.
The previous one?
The variance in March, 2023, March, compared to the other years.
Which one, did you want to look at SSUT?
Right here, in March.
Okay.
March of 2023.
Yeah.
Different variance.
Yep, with the real property tax trends, it just looks like some collections came in a little bit later that year, if you look across. Look at 2024, January and February, how much those were much heavier than the previous year. It looks like we just had some late payers there in March, or we got late credit for them, sometimes that happens too, in 2023. If we want to go back to the total, though, for the year, that might be helpful on the very first page with our real property. When we look at the total property tax for 2023, we took in $13,419, and then in 2024, $14,877. So you tend to have, because of the assessments going up, you tend to have like just a little bit of a bump. I think it's just the timing difference of when those payments came in.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, so going back to the real property and then license, that's another one. Of course, that is a, that is a downturn, the licensing permits, sorry, that is an increase of 19%, like Enrique Vaughn. On the grocery receipts and franchise tax, those are, you know, generally collected in January, February as well. The, the month-to-month comparison shows a decline, but we are 2.9% over the same period of eight months over last year. As we look at the next series of graphs, this is where you can really see the year-on-year comparisons for the same period. This was particularly encouraging to me to see that the 2025, for the first eight months, sales and use tax had trended up by 3.87%. That was a little bit more than what we have been seeing earlier in the year. We were looking at 1% to 2% and just seeing like we had a little bump up in these later months, that has improved that. With SSUT, we've had a bump as well, just for the cumulative, on the next slide, the cumulative amount for the first eight months, $5 million to $5.7 million, that's a 12.8% increase. When you put these two together, I know we like to show them apart because they behave a little bit differently. But when we put these two things, two numbers together, an overall increase of 4.48% in sales and use tax, including SSUT. So that was encouraging to me. On the next slide, for real property, for the same period, again, we've increased 3.28%. And then licensing permits, that's relatively flat, not a whole lot of change, less than $100,000 of change from the same period last year. One of the things that I will say about this is, the second reminder notice for renewals went out in April, at the end of April. And so I think that probably accounts for some of the, some of the May collections that we had. We have another, the third reminder for folks who still have not paid, planned for July. So I'm hoping that in the next month, we'll see some more of these revenues trickle in from now. Last but not least are gross receipts and franchise tax numbers, that's up almost 3%. And this category is actually at 102.5% of our whole annual budget. So the way I look at that is anything extra that we collect for the next four months is kind of gravy, makes me happy. And that's it.
Any additional questions from the council?
Two comments. First, I want to thank you for including the expenditures on the interim financial statements, and also, could these two reports be made public on the website?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Will you let me know if I need to give any additional stuff or to get that on the website? Okay, thank you.
One more question. When do you expect, I guess, to get economic impact of SEC?
Well, I would hope that much of it would be on the July record for June collections, I'm thinking. Because remember, June, in June, you're collecting, those are the tax collections related to main activity. With the exception of SSUT, we're always a month behind of all these categories except for SSUT, which is a two-month lag.
Is there a way to find out if the hotels, if they had that year before, did they have that information to you or what?
Have a, not that I know of, I can check with Ken Davidson and get back with you on that. I'm not sure that there's a, I think we would see it when the tax revenue comes in. I don't know that there's an informal, like, feedback loop on that.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Thank you so much, Jennifer. I know the council has actually been agreeable over the years based upon each call sent, and this has helped improve as easier calls on.
Well, a lot of credit goes to the team and the finance department.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. We'll go to the regular agenda now, paying the bills.
Motion to approve payment of bills.
Second. Second at all?
Second.
All right, any comments about? Any comments by the council? About the public? Come here. Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Again, look, everyone, just state the name and the area you're from. You don't have to give your exact address, location, because this is public. I'd be sure to y'all.
Thank you. I'm Paul Hammer, Melbrook. I've had raised some issues about the lack of detail on payment of bills, but everybody want to talk about that tonight. Because I've got to say, wow, it's, it's amazing the difference a presiding officer makes. It, there's really a nice environment here tonight. Thank you all, actually all four of you. Doesn't feel like anything crazy is going to happen. And it's nice, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. That being said, can, can one more come?
Ken Kane, Los Angeles Parkway. Just thinking about what Mr. Hammer said about payment of bills being murky sometimes. I, I get it's not always feasible to go through every single one, but I know what you, you try to make sure you guys are intentional about is being transparent and being open about most of things. So, so one of the issues that I noticed going through some of this campaign election year, and I know everyone's running for office and campaign contributions are flowing left and right, and it gets a little bit murky sometimes. One of the things that I noticed last week was actually, for the most part, everyone on the dais that I know that I've talked with, I've watched over the last few years, how you guys, if there is an issue that comes up and you have a conflict, more often than not, almost 100% of the time, I watch you guys at stake, which I think is the right thing to do to avoid the very appearance of, of any type of shady backdoor deal or impropriety. My question, though, is what happens when the mayor's office submits something as part of the payment of bills or proposal or request, and you don't have knowledge, information that he's taking campaign contributions from said contract, right? So you get a request, for example, the, the addition to the Hoover Act, $100,000, you guys got that agreement, you got that request last month. So, hey, listen, we need $100,000, let's give Mr. Schaefer another $100,000. Did you know that Mr. Schaefer had written the mayor a $5,000 check maybe a month before? And when, and if you knew that, that's great. I just want to know, generally speaking, do you guys know when the mayor gets money from a, a campaign contribution before he comes to you and says, I need you to approve this work? Generally speaking, is that?
Let me ask, can I answer this way, if you don't mind? So I'll answer it generally. So any, so two different things, I'll separate them two. Any bid requirement items that require a state bill law have to go through those procedures. You can't go away, get away from around that. So if it's public works of $100,000, you have to bid those advertised wherever the laws are responsible. Bidder, win said work, right? And then some other stipulations that occur from there. If it's one bidder you got there, you can reject and negotiate. On professional services, as long as these groups are either licensed and/or have the proper credentialing, these, these topics are not allowed to be based upon the dollar. They have to be qualified based. You cannot hire somebody based upon their dollar. So from a strictly business standpoint, I haven't seen any company in my tenure that have come before this council that has not been a person that was either not bid it and/or there was a qualified person to do said work. So that's a point.
Yeah.
Now, as far as campaign contributions, you know, law allows anyone to support a campaign if they lead their individual details, good government. So I'll just land on that piece of it. Any personal type things outside of that? I'll be more so get into my opinion, character-based.
Yeah.
And I don't want to be accusing.
Right, no, no, this is.
But I just want to just.
Yeah, no, no.
Did I kind of give a little over? Probably didn't answer your questions about, I just want to speak for, you know, myself and just the normal business practice.
And I appreciate that. I guess where I'm going with this is if you guys have to recuse yourself or make the conscious decision to accuse yourself or not vote on certain issues because of the very appearance of a conflict, then I certainly respect that. I just wanted to know if you guys have any type of, you know, unspoken rule or request of the mayor's office that when he has money coming to his campaign call first, can you guys get any type of visibility on it prior to voting for? Because I can tell you, I haven't gone through and looked at all the campaign contributions that Mayor Roca has received in the last six months, but I will tell you 30 days from receiving five grand from someone, and then granting them work for $100,000 just seems a bit sus, like the young folks say. So I'm trying to figure out if you guys have any standard, any process where you guys at least request some level of transparency when, when he's, you know, pushing, promoting, encouraging contracts be given out to certain folks?
Again, I'll, I'll say this way, no. But again, for me being an engineer as well too, I want to be careful with the companies as well because, you know, once you can make the statement is that they are doing something to repay. And I don't want to do that piece, but to answer your initial question, no, no. Now, a lot of these companies I've seen, again, perform work for all, a lot of city governments, they're using pretty much some of the same engineering firms, whether it's water, structural, some of the same road bidders are the same individuals, group builders, the same individuals. But answering your question, you know, we don't ask that of the particular mayor piece of it. But the council itself, we, if it's a company we actually work for, I've seen that we have done it on that particular.
Would you, would you find it appropriate to take a $5,000 contribution from a, from a donor and then 30 days later, approve a $100,000 contract for that same donor? Would you find that personally appropriate?
Again, Ken, I want to be real clear because I don't want to, in any formal way, paint a bad picture about these companies, right? Because these same companies do give a lot of funding to local, state, national, federal companies. You know, I don't want, wanted to do that. I would say that, again, the competitive bid law still allows you to go through a process. You can't avoid that process. You have to be a qualified person, renter, professional services to even do said work. And if you have shown that you have done work for the government or order system or electrical system, you're, you're a resume speech for that. So I, I don't speak for the rest of the council, but I speak for it in general. When I look at any information coming for me, it's based upon your qualifications and can you perform said work. And a lot of these folks have been going to work for us with previous mayors and 10 years back, things of that nature. So I was just, yeah.
I did, I appreciate it, timing, the appearance of impropriety. It doesn't always mean anything. That's why I said I will make sure that I go back and, and look at, you know, the coincidence of campaign contribution versus contracts that the council has been asked to approve. So I appreciate you for consideration.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right. Can I get a roll call vote? Yes, I'll be the first to second.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
All right. Next one is the, is the minutes for June 5th and the 9th.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 5th and June 9th without reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Any questions for the public? No questions, we'll call, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
All right. Next one, the resolution 8480, well, that's been, no, that's fine, 848625.
This resolution appoints the city clerk to perform all duties of the mayor pertaining to the August 26, 2025 municipal election, and if necessary, the September 23, 2025 municipal runoff election as required by the code of Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution number 8486-25.
Second.
All right. Then probably motion is second. Thomas from the council? Thomas from the public? All right, no comments. Call, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
There's no suspicion passed, resolution 848725.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Roca to execute a municipal election services agreement with the Jefferson County Commission for the municipal election on August 26, 2025, and the runoff election on September 23, 2025, if necessary.
Motion to approve resolution number 8487-25.
Second.
All right, probably motion is second. Any questions from the council? What about the public? No comments, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Aye, I see. 8488, resolution 848825. That has been removed from the agenda. We acknowledged that by chamber, so we don't have to go through that. Next item, resolution 849025.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Roca to execute an agreement with Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America for the City of Hoover crime insurance policy.
Motion to approve resolution number 8490-25.
Second.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm seeking to renew four insurance policies for the city, which are all set to expire July 1st. With the assistance of my insurance consultant, Mr. Brittle, who's here with me tonight, we have obtained quotes and they're presented in your packet. All of these renewals are budgeted risk management items and they are within our budget. The first one is the renewal for our crime insurance policy. That's with Travelers. This policy affords protection against employee theft, credit card forgery, and counterfeit charges. It also provides the $2.5 million insurance coverage for the E911 Communications District, which you are members of. This premium has a slight increase of $829, but the rate is locked for a three-year term. And tonight, I'm seeking permission to buy that insurance coverage. I'm not happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the council? Just one question. What challenges are you seeing, especially from cities regarding death and things of that nature? Because at one point, I knew some challenges with folks falsifying information, saying they are still pulling Social Security and they were still working, and they didn't know whether they were not working at, at that current location or working calm, so a lot of things are going on. What things that you see that cities face or trends that are, that you're seeing?
As far as, excuse me, as far as crime, we're not seeing any claims or threats with regards to that. Initially, we did buy this policy because it was a state requirement when the city established our E911 Communications District. But it just so happens that it also provides this other coverage, which is a great safety map for the city. So we, we're not seeing any exposures or having any issues with that. So we're pleased with this coverage.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from the public? No questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution has passed, resolution 849125.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Roca to execute an agreement with Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America for the Hoover cyber liability insurance.
Motion to approve resolution number 8491-25.
Second.
Motion, probably second.
This is a renewal of our cyber liability policy. You may remember, last year, we expanded our coverage and we're happy with the coverage this new expanded policy has. It does provide extortion protection, like for a ransomware attack that may come against the city. And it also has privacy breach notification costs built in. This increase is $391 for the year, so a minimal increase.
All right, also, any questions from the council? What about the public? No questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Motion passes, resolution 849225.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Roca to execute a renewal agreement with Global Aerospace for the unmanned aircraft insurance policy for the City of Hoover.
Motion to approve resolution number 8492-25.
Second.
All right. Motion probably second, approved and second. Is your show?
Yes, this is, this is for global airspace for all of our police drones. We have 23 police drones and three cameras. This premium actually came in lower this year, so we have a savings of over $5,217. And so we did acquire two new drones this year, but we're happy with the coverage that it provides for our police department.
All right. All right, any comments from the council? What about the audience? No comments, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution has been passed, resolution 849325.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Roca to renew the city's insurance with Alliant Insurance Services and for the City of Hoover Alabama property insurance coverage.
Motion to approve resolution number 8493-25.
Second.
Resolution has been, motion probably second.
This, this final item is for our property insurance coverage with Alliant Insurance Services. And it does provide property insurance for buildings, contents, high-value vehicles. It also has boiler and machinery and pollution coverage in there. Again, I'm happy to report that it came in under budget with a savings of $14,977 this year. And our team with Mr. Brittle did an outstanding job looking at some options, and we recommend renewing this coverage. We think it's a great, a great buy for the city.
All right, awesome. Any questions from the council? What about the public? No questions, roll call.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution has been approved, resolution 849425.
This resolution formally accepts the donation and transfer of equipment from the Alabama Mutual Aid System for the benefit of use of the City of Hoover Fire Department. The resolution further authorizes Mayor Roca and Chief Bentley to take all necessary actions to accept and administer the use of this equipment in compliance with the terms set by the Alabama Mutual Aid System.
Motion to approve resolution number 8494-25.
Second.
All right, resolution has been, motion probably second.
I'm here on Chief Bentley's behalf to talk about this. The Alabama Mutual Aid System includes 52 teams from across the state that are organized in seven regions. And this system is in place to ensure that trade and equipment numbers are ready to provide emergency services during major disasters. So we received a Polaris Ranger, which is a four-person side-by-side all-train vehicle from AMAS funding, and the rest, this resolution is to request that we accept the AP.
Any questions from the council? Public? No questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McLinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution has been passed, resolution 849525.
This resolution accepts a contribution from the Jefferson County Community Service Fund presented by Alabama State Representative Lee Halsey in the total amount of $9,896 used in the purchase of training equipment for the Hoover Fire Department. This resolution further amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 25, 2025, as shown in the exhibit A of this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution number 8495-25.
Second.
Motion probably second.
So this is a request to accept the funds that were presented at the last council meeting to the fire department. And this is for equipment at Fire Station 6, some hoses that need to be replaced.
Any questions from the council?
It's a request to accept the money and then also amend the budget so it can, the money can be spent.
Perfect. No questions from the council, public? All right, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye, resolution has been passed, resolution eighty-four ninety-six twenty-five.
This resolution accepts a contribution from the Jefferson County Community Service Fund presented by Alabama State Representative Lee Holsing in the total amount of nine-thousand-three-hundred-forty-eight dollars to be used in the purchase of AEDs for the Hoover Police Department. This resolution further amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-five, as shown in exhibit A to this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution number eight-four-nine-six dash two-five.
Second.
Resolution probably second.
Good evening, council, this is to purchase five AEDs from Go Rescue. Senator Holsing was gracious enough to award us a community grant to use to purchase these. I think we've already accepted the grant a couple of weeks ago, and now this is just the following to make the purchase.
Perfect. Any comments, questions from the council? Public? No questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution has been passed, resolution eighty-four ninety-five, ninety-seven twenty-five.
This resolution accepts a contribution from the Alabama Department of Tourism via Alabama State Representatives Mike Shaw and Lee Holsing in the total amount of five-thousand-two-hundred dollars to be used to offset the cost of the local police and fire gangs. This resolution further amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-five, as shown in exhibit A to the resolution, and authorizes the CFO to execute a letter of understanding for the city.
Motion to approve resolution number eight-four-nine-seven dash two-five.
Second.
Resolution has been, motion probably second.
Yeah, this, this will help offset costs that the city's incurred on behalf of the local police and fire gangs. A lot of the gangs are happening in our city and we're very proud of that. Most of them are in the Hoover Met Complex. There are some out at Veterans Park as well, but we are, this will offset cleaning costs, rental, rental supplies, that sort, that sort thing.
All right, any questions for the council? Public? All right, no questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye. Next for our nuisance claims, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. I wish we could read those all together, but sooner we can.
Sixteen and seventeen, that's right.
Sixteen to nine?
Correct.
Okay, well, steal the same.
Resolution eighty-four ninety-eight twenty-five authorizes abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at thirteen oh-one Darius Street, Hoover, Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution, resolution number eight-four-nine-eight dash two-five.
Second.
Been motion probably second.
Good evening, as you can see on the overhead, this, the conditions on the site as of today is in need of nuisance declaration.
All right, any questions for the council? Any questions, comments from the public? All right, no questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution eighty-four ninety-nine twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of weed and other vegetation nuisance at thirty-four sixty Sheila Drive, Hoover, Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution number eight-four-nine-nine dash two-five.
Second.
Resolution has been, motion probably second.
Yes, sir, as of today, as seen in the picture overhead, the conditions on the site are still out of conformity with our ordinance.
All right, any questions for the council? Any questions, comments from the public? If no questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Aye.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Has been passed, resolution eighty-four seventy-three twenty-five.
This resolution will access a declaration of a vacation of an easement located on the property of eighty-sixty-nine Castle Hill Road, Hoover, Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution number eight-four-seven-three-dash-two-five.
Resolution has been, motion, I'm sorry, second, all right, and probably second. Matt?
Yes, sir, this is an approximately ten-foot wide easement located on Lot Fifty-seven, the Castle Hill Road vicinity of Greystone. This particular easement was to be utilized for sanitary sewer services. Sanitary sewer line has been abandoned at this location. We have utility letters from all of the utilities present in that vicinity stating that they have no interest in the easement and therefore it's coming to you for abandonment as well or vacation. The plat showing the vacation has been approved by the planning commission.
All right, any questions, comments from the council? Any for the public? No questions, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver abstaining. Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolution has been passed, resolution eighty-five hundred twenty-five.
This resolution approves in the sense to a declaration of vacation of a sewer easement located on the property of seven thirty-two Mill Springs Lane, Hoover, Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution number eight-five-zero-zero dash two-five.
Second.
Resolution has been, motion probably second.
Yes, sir, the sewer easement at this location on lots fourteen and fifteen of the Mill Springs subdivision is actually shifting the easement that runs along our, the City of Hoover sanitary sewer line, shifting it to the south approximately seven and a half to nine feet. So the portion of the easement to the north of the proposed new easement is what is the subject of the vacation this evening. This plat showing the shifting of the sanitary sewer easement has been approved by the planning and zoning commission, and City of Hoover staff has no issues with it and recommend its approval.
Couple of things, Wendy and Legal, looked at seventeen and definitely abstaining because there's all those, is doing business, but been in utility, definitely abstaining from that one. Didn't see it quite on sixteen, but is awarded letter was sent as well to. I either, I either need to abstain by note or do we need to revisit sixteen so I can restate my extension?
Well, you can state your extension if the, these votes would require a majority of those present, so it would take three votes to pass each of these, so if we have
more than that.
Two members abstaining.
So let me kind of go on record, technically I don't have to abstain from any utility related work, I even got an opinion from that because that is not my company and this is public to public. I just have made a practice to do, to do that. But for the purpose of getting this passed, I just want to, I'll vote on it to get it through, but if we had five people.
I'm not aware of any, neither are you, so next time.
Right, can you repeat that again?
Said I'm not aware of any county, neither are you.
I don't own the company, so, good to go. All right, roll call vote.
Councilor Driver?
Abstaining.
Councilor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Councilor McClinton?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
All right, now we're into our first reading, will not be any votes taken on that first reading, next, resolution eighty-four eighty-one twenty-five.
Yes, the reason that's for on, we're going first reading.
First reading, eighteen through twenty-one, okay? Next.
So, resolution eighty-four eighty-one twenty-five authorizes the abatement of weed or other vegetation nuisance at twenty-one twenty-five Tyler Lane, Hoover, Alabama. A public hearing for all of these will be held on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Resolution eighty-four eighty-two twenty-five authorizes the abatement of weed or other vegetation nuisance at twenty-one fifty-two March Mount Circle, Hoover, Alabama. Public hearing on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Resolution eight-four eight-three two-five authorizes the abatement of weed or vegetation nuisance at twenty-three thirty-seven Tyler Road, Hoover, Alabama, with public hearing on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five. And resolution eighty-four eighty-four twenty-five authorizes abatement of weed or other vegetation nuisance at twenty-eight eighty-two Wisteria Drive, Hoover, Alabama, with a public hearing on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Number twenty-two, you want to go ahead and read twenty-two as well to his first reading off?
Yes, first reading, item number twenty-two is a resolution number eight-four eight-five two-five, which grants conditional use approval for the operation of an indoor golf facility for the property located at twenty-eight fifteen Greystone Commercial Boulevard, Hoover, Alabama. The condition shown on exhibit two of the resolution, a public hearing will be held on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
That's it, Matt, you want, is there commentary?
Uh, just that for each of the abatement cases, as customary, we will check those immediately before the public hearing and we'll have pictures and an update for you. And the final one, the conditional use, twenty-eight fifteen Greystone Commercial Boulevard, that is for an entertainment venue, and the conditions should be attached to the ordinance. There are a total of ten that will report to the city council from the planning commission.
All right, okay, within the agenda, any comments from the council? All right, what about the public? Chief?
Thank you. As many of you know, I will be qualifying tomorrow afternoon to run for the office of Mayor Hoover. State law requires me to take a leave, vacation, once I qualify until the election is certified in August. I will be naming Roman Duffy, our assistant chief, as the acting chief effective tomorrow at five o'clock. I've been honored to serve the citizens of Hoover the last forty-plus years as a police officer and the last twenty and a half as a police chief. I've been blessed to have the opportunity to work with the men and women and really the finest group of women and women that wear a uniform and we're just blessed to be part of it. Like I say all the time, nobody does it like we do. I'd also like to say that I've been proud to serve with the other city employees and I really think that's the reason we have this great city is because of what the employees have done in the years that I've been here. I appreciate the opportunities that, that I've been given and I'll say goodbye tonight and I'll see you guys in about two months. Appreciate it, thank you.
Now, for the purpose of, would you like to ask Duffy to come up here and so we can see his face?
Come on up. I'm really, I'm really in capable hands. No wardrobe, no.
Yep, forward.
Thank you very much. I'm a little caught off guard by this. I appreciate very much the leadership and assistance and support that the council has given us my twenty-four years here, certainly not as long as the chief has been here, but very fortunate, as he said, to work with a group of employees that we do, have the support of the government that we do, and we will continue on for the next few months doing the Hoover White and the things that we do.
Well, I can tell you this, you've done probably just about every job for the police department, even directing traffic at Hunter Street on Sundays.
That is a sample, too.
Yes, sir. All right, no further comments?
I got one comment. Chief Dursis, thank you very much for taking down this city, great leadership, you deal with, you definitely do it with style, that's for sure, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy your vacation, so, see you soon.
Bye. All right. If no further questions, we shall adjourn this meeting.